I call to order our, what is it, September 8th meeting. It's 5:03. To start a meeting, I'd like to go into non-public, so I need a motion. Please to do that.
You'd like to make a motion to go into non-public?
Second.
Second.
Do you want the RSA?
The RSA is RSA 91A32E. We made a motion to come out of non-public. It is now 5:09. Is that a puffin?
It looks like it. Should be a kingfisher. There she is. One big naps.
Don't even have a pen? This is what I have, I have some questions about that. Aye? Sorry? So, go into public input. Time allotted for public input, public comment is 30 minutes and individuals can comment up to three minutes per person. One parent input regarding unauthorized communication devices?
So this would be an opportunity if anybody wanted to provide any input on the unauthorized communication devices policy. That's coming before school boards in the month of September. It will visit the policy committee in September and then it will come back for adoption in October, October meeting.
So we'll just keep it open?
Okay.
For the next 37 minutes. Announcements? Anyone? Okay. Business and financials.
So there were no financials in your pack this month. We will start next month. In our last meeting, we did present to you the DOE and had you sign the D E and MS-25s. Just for clarification, we had reported projected unbalance in the June meeting of $25,401 and we ended up with $48,670. And just to let you know what some of the differences were, they, we did not have as much food service loss as we expected. Our insurances were a little bit less than we expected. We had some savings in student body, days not worked for AIDS and we did not have, we had invoices less than expected in maintenance. So that's where that all came from.
Okay.
Anyone have any questions?
Can you remind me exactly what happens now with that balance?
So that balance is used when they determine the tax rate. So, so next year, so this fall, when they determine the tax rate, that will be applied on the December tax bills. They're going to use that as, as an additional revenue source.
Okay.
To decrease what we need for next year.
For next year?
Right.
Which I think the, if we recall, the increase that we proposed and got approved was like $38,000, $36,000, $37,000.
So it's, it's not just us, it's not just the school district, it's the entire district rate for the time.
Okay, so only, so applies to the town and not just?
It's the whole tax rate, right?
Got it. Thank you.
In looking at over the summer, I had some questions about paying or, do we, A, pay hourly for our teachers' summer? Is it a stipend? And there was a, a bill for 24, six and some change for Stratford Learning Center. And I was look, I was hoping more for explanation, like what, what is that? And so I have a kind of a two, and this was just kind of going back over the summer and looking at some of those things. My other question of that was food service, because each month there was seven, eight grand total. And I could be reading the spreadsheet wrong, and so I will say that right up front. But in the manifest, there were these costs to food service and I was just looking for an explanation. But one is kind of a summer package and how that looks and feels. How many, like, can you explain, and it doesn't need to be today, that can be something we can do later. But like the number of kids we have, how many staff we're paying, is it a stipend? Is it an hourly? What, we must have to have special ed on board for that. And those were two kind of larger chunks and without a breakdown. Because some of them are also doing 26 pay periods, my guess, and so payroll is going out with their checks, their regular salary on it. So looking, looking to break down that. And what are the kids, I guess an overview, like when they come in? Because we changed the programmatic side of it. Two years ago, I think they were coming in like an eight to 12. And this year, they were coming in two hours for more very, more specific. Again, that's more of a question. I'm looking for an explanation. But then what is this 24K and some change to Stratford Learning Center? For the chunk of, I think that was, that was billed in August. And you don't need to answer now if you don't want to, I'm just saying that when I saw it over the summer, I, I think the board would like an explanation as to kind of where those funds are going to, but.
I can, I can definitely answer the Stratford right now.
Right, okay.
It's who we contract with for OT services.
Okay.
So that would be, you know, last year.
Whoever.
And we contracted with her over the summer. So that, that wasn't just the summer, that was filtering in the last year as well.
So the whole $24,000 is a year long?
We also dip into IDEA for OT services, so it's a combination of what we budgeted for contracted services, excuse me. And then a portion of her contracted service goes through IDEA grant.
And where would we see that? Would that be on the manifest? No?
No.
No, okay.
Anything paid from a grant would be processed through SAU and you wouldn't, you wouldn't see it on?
You wouldn't see that, okay. Okay.
As far as the summer goes, it, are you just, are you just asking about the summer learning programs as far as hourly versus stipend? Or it could be professional development also? So it, it's a mix.
It's a mix, right. So I guess when I'm, when I, when I see the line item that says summer, summer stipends or hourly rate or whatever, there was one that said $10,625, that was on 725. And then when I saw one for 88, that was $8,350. And I'm sure there was one before that, like the 7/11 one, I didn't, I didn't see that. But that was outside of the salaries that were being paid to the teachers. And so, yeah, my first question is, are they on a stip, like they, they sign up to be in the summer program and they receive a stipend? Or are we paying them hourly to be in that summer?
Yes, Y director, so Ms. Casey oversees the whole program. She gets paid a stipend.
To be the director?
And she's also a teacher in the program, so she gets an hourly, an hourly.
Wage?
Wage, yep. All the, all the teachers and paraprofessionals that work summer learning, whether it's the E S Y or the regular summer learning program are all hourly, except for the director who gets a stipend.
Can you explain the difference between the summer program and E S Y?
So the students who have I E Ps, if they qualify for summer learning through the, through their I E P.
Yep.
Receive their I E P services during the summer, during those blocks.
Okay.
Those students who were referred by the classroom teacher to our summer learning, which is working, it's more like a tier two, working on specific skills that the teacher recommends. The teachers would recommend those students attend our summer learning. Parents would be notified and parents would assign their child up to either attend or not attend.
Do the I E P students have the option to sign up or not sign up?
Yes.
Okay.
Parents can, well, if they qualify. If a student qualifies for, for E S Y, which is a separate meeting, then yes, they were, they were qualified to attend over the summer.
Okay.
If they don't qualify, they can still attend summer learning, but they're not working on their I E P goals.
Correct, okay, I understand. Now, based on that, how many kids are actually showing up? Like, so if they're, if they're on their I E P and they're in E S Y, you know, that number of kids are being offered this particular service for them.
Yep.
Do all those kids show up? I would think that the parents have some like option there.
They, for the students with E S Y, I think they show up, but they might have a vacation built in those four weeks.
Okay, great.
So it changes day to day.
And you're saying it's, it's four weeks?
Four weeks, yep.
But the classroom learning one, the tier two one, how many kids show up for that?
I'll have to look.
Look, okay. So again, more, more for understanding and explanation, but if, if we're spending, I'm using a rough number here, 20 grand on this, what does it look like? How many kids are we really servicing, especially in that tier two? Especially if it's a two-hour chunk of time in the middle of the day? I would just be really curious to see what those numbers look like. And how do we know that there's actual growth over the summer? So if they're coming in the first week in July after July 4th, are we pre-testing and then post-testing after to see if there's any growth? Or what's happening during those weeks that they're with us?
Summer, whether it's summer learning or E S Y, is not supposed to be growth, it's supposed to be maintenance.
Maintain, okay. So can, are we using what they left with in June in, in tracking their maintenance that way? I'm just looking to see if, how, how do we know that the summer program's working?
And we can certainly work on gathering some information and providing.
Something.
Some, some more information as we're looking at this as a budget here. I know that's, that was kind of the essence of what you were, you know.
If, if kids are utilizing this and families are utilizing it and we are maintaining that growth, 100%. I'm just looking at where, where in the budget do we have, do we have the ability to, to look at some things? Now, the second piece was food service. Each month, there was a, there was thousands of dollars even when school was out that was on that budget line. And so that, I didn't understand why that was, but it could be my lack of understanding.
Before we get, I mean, that'll be, before we get to that, next month is when I'm going to talk about special ed and look at our current numbers and so I'll include.
Some summers, yeah, great, thank you. That'd be great.
And so I will go back and look at each of the manifests, but we do process even in July, if we're paying bills that are coming in, you know, all these foods that were purchased in July or these supplies or even salaries. We process in July and bring them back to the correct year. So in those July manifests, you could see expenses that we're actually paying for the previous year. But I'll go through and I'll, I'll provide you guys with a list of.
Again, it's more education, right? Like why, why is it there? And if we were ever asked, we would be able to at least answer with some, some clarity.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Just in terms of financials, Brendan, I was going to ask about this maybe during the goals update, but just how the sign was paid for and where that came. Just a reminder, a fresh room where that came from.
It was, you mean, out of which, it's coming out of this year's budget.
Meaning this school year right now?
Right, okay.
And I think we got to that from last, our last meeting in June, we said we were going to pause until August because we didn't want to.
Right, because of this year's budget versus.
Right, and we were, we were scared, yeah, we get all scary, yes.
Right, thank you for the reference.
Yeah. Anything else?
Nothing on my end.
Okay. Michelle, you good?
Good.
Fabulous. Superintendent's update?
Thank you, I'll be pretty brief this evening. First of all, thank you for welcoming me to the community and also apologizing for a little bit of a mix-up this evening. I know the meeting was posted for five. We do meet at 5:30 until spring, I believe it's March that we were.
I had it completely backwards.
Also, we met in the middle, but anyway, I do apologize for that. And then the only other thing I just wanted to bring to your attention, which is actually under the board chair's report, is that you see a whole list of policies this evening. The policies for review really are just that, there are no changes. They are, we're required to review them regularly. And so we did just want to have school boards in the month of September just have an opportunity to review. Of course, if you saw one that you felt like we needed to pull back and look at, we could, we could definitely take it off of the review only list and do that. But we've checked them, they're up to date and, and that's why they're there. The parental bill of rights, we do need to pass or we need to talk about tonight. And then again, the unauthorized communication devices will come back in October. So just, it's a, it's probably going to be a lot of policy in the next few months, just because we, we have a lot coming at us and we're, we're trying to keep up with it. So that's where we're at with that. That's, that's what I got, yeah.
Chair's report. So one, I would like to welcome Allison to our board. We're switching, transitioning from Renee from our last one and now Allison will be joining us, so welcome.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you. Superintendent's evaluation, we have started that process. Dr. Andruski has set his goals. The committee has asked, we started this last year and felt that it was, I don't know. We started strong, but at the end of last year, after working with the superintendent, we felt we could be better. And so we got a lot clearer with what we were looking for from the superintendent's evaluation. So we've asked him to have very clean measurable goals. We asked him to review it and revise it and he did. He seemed, he's working with the chair of the superintendent evaluation committee. And so I was personally, being on the committee, I was very happy with the clarity and kind of the definitions of what each of the goals are that he, that he's after. So we'll meet in a couple more months. We meet four times before we start the 360 evaluation, which includes all of the district.
Kason, do we want to jump back up, sorry, to minutes approval and then the principal's report?
Oh, sure, did I skip it?
I think it's because I skipped to you.
Yeah. Sorry, Brendan.
It's okay.
I'll go back.
I'll do minutes first.
Oh, yeah, approval of minutes. Any changes, any revisions? Okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Yep, okay. Principal's report?
Thank you very much. We've had a wonderful, wonderful start to our school year. We've welcomed three new staff members. Sarah Sheffield, our new art teacher, Caitlin Groschon, paraprofessional, and Michaela Hamm, our third and fourth grade teacher. We've had 28 new students join our E K S community. That ranges from, you know, all of our kindergartners and then a few students in first and second grade and, I think that's it, one, third grader maybe, but 28, 28 new students. Our P T O sponsored cone ice truck for us on our meet and greet before the first day of school. And we had a whole, whole group of parents here for the first day for our opening day goal convention, which the weather again participated for us. So it was a wonderful start to the school year. Enrollment numbers as of the first day of school were 118 students, 24 kindergartners, 18 first grade, 18 second grade, 25 third grade, 21 fourth grade and 12, 12 fifth graders. Areas of focus for our school this year, we, this is a really big year for us with, with a couple of different areas. The first one that we are excited about and we're going to be really strategic about, I think I talked about it in the spring, but we are looking at our PLCs and having the focus during, during our PLC blocks is really looking at our win times throughout the day. Win stands for what I need now. Our kindergarten students have their win blocks built into their ELA or their math blocks. Our first and second graders have a combined win time in the morning to start the day. And our third, fourth and fifth graders have their win blocks after lunch. We were really careful about making sure that interventionists and special education staff were not pulling students during the win blocks. We wanted all available staff. So we, we built this into our master schedule this year for the first time. In the past, it's been grade level specific, building it in. But we felt through all of our work during our PLC times, the crew that went to, of the two crews that went to the PLC at work conference, we really wanted that to be an area of focus. So the majority of our PLCs will be looking at data and having kids move in and out of win blocks depending on the highest need for those children during that time. So.
Have you, sorry Brendan, have you, and it probably hasn't started yet because you're still assessing where, where kids are. But have you figured out by just math, like how many kids per win block they'll be with each teacher, each body?
We haven't figured that out yet.
Okay, and it might, it might, I mean, as I'm asking you, it might flip, you might have two or three and then six in one and whatever, but okay.
Yeah, it's, it's really going to be on the specific skill that that student needs to work on. And it could be a math win block for specific students or a reading win block. So we didn't, we can't right now on our master schedule fit in a 30-minute math and a 30-minute reading win block. So we have just one for each grade level now. And it'll be based on student needs. Students with I E Ps, if there's going to be any pullouts during that time, students with I E Ps, based on the conversations between special education staff and classroom teachers. If a student has a math and a reading goal, is it better to pull out during that win block or pull out during a different time of the day? So all those conversations will happen after assessments are done during the first PLC meetings, which are scheduled for the 17th and 19th. So we're hoping that our interventions during win, or enrichment during win will be starting the weekend of 25th.
Do you win every day?
It'll be every day, three through five, four days a week, one and two, yep. The other big area, and I, I just have a, just a really quick presentation, just to, to talk through about our next very big area that we're going to be focusing on this year. And that is taking a look at, at piloting two reading programs. So we've talked a lot the last two years about whether it's board meetings or within our PLC or staff meetings, reading. And OG has been such a big thing for our school the last, the last three years. Our current second graders are the first group that started in kindergarten with OG and really building up our foundation of reading at the earliest grade levels. And as you know, we've spent a lot of time and energy and money into training all of our staff in OG. And the data that you've seen over the last couple of years is really showing all the hard work that they've done. That being said, we also know OG doesn't hit every single area, especially when you get up to third, fourth and fifth grade. So we know, and this was talked about during our PLC meetings, our leadership meetings the last year, with Jill, with Mr. Schuster, reading specialist, with me, and then our teachers. We know that there is a variability in reading and writing instruction across grade levels once you get up into the intermediate grades. And we know that because we don't have one specific K to five reading program. We also know that comprehension, writing vocabulary is not really hit during the OG. And again, there's variability amongst grade levels and teachers on how we look at comprehension, writing vocab. And because of this, it makes it challenging as our, as our students get older to track our students' progress. In addition to that, there is a legislative update, HB 1015, that was passed last April and has, has an implementation date of July 2027, where we are being required to have areas of instruction hit during reading. That's phonemic awareness, phonics, which is decoding and encoding, flowy C vocab and comprehension. So the vocab and comprehension also showed up in the new legislative update. And then in addition to that, our writing was, you know, across the board, K to five was different depending on which teacher you had or which grade level you might be in. So the reading programs that we're going to be looking at have a writing component also, in addition to the areas of need that our students have in comprehension vocab. The presentation you're seeing is a very similar one that I did to our, with our leadership team and then our staff meeting before we left in June. So there is a need for vertical alignment. It's going to ensure consistency in instructional practices and expectations, facilitate smooth transitions between grade levels, enhance the ability to track and support student progress over time, promotes equity and literacy instruction for all of our students, K to five, and provides a common curriculum and materials that they can revisit, sorry, that revisit the key concepts with increasing complexity to deepen understanding. We have that in math and it's something that we all know that we would need in reading eventually. So this is kind of where we're starting from. I'm referencing the PLC core principles because I think they're really important as we start navigating this process of a, of a reading program pilot and then into a reading program with a focus on learning, our collaborative culture and a results orientation, which is what we've talked about a lot during our PLCs. With a focus on learning, a vertically aligned reading program will guarantee access to essential literacy skills for every single student that comes into our school. It eliminates any instructional gaps and redundancies and it supports a coherent progression of skills from K through fifth grade. As we look at the collaborative culture, it's going to, we're going to encourage the cross, the cross-grade level collaboration amongst our educators. We already do that, but now we're going to have that built within our PLCs with a common program, eventually a common program in our building. Develops shared language and understanding of instructional goals and fosters a unified approach to literacy instruction and assessment. A reading program will give alignment that allows for the development of common formative assessments, facilitates data-driven discussions to identify student needs and supports timely and targeted interventions and extensions. And we, we are really focusing more on extensions during those win blocks than we ever had in the past. Like I just talked about win time, one of our, one of our goals for this year, dedicated periods for intervention and enrichment. Alignment assures that win time is purposeful and responsive to student data and promotes flexible groupings based on specific skill needs. Here are the benefits of having a K to five vertically aligned program. Consistent instructional practices and rigor across all grade levels and enhanced collaboration and professional learning amongst teachers, improve student outcomes through targeted support, streamlined assessment and progress monitoring, provide common curriculum materials and revisit key concepts with increasing complexity to deepen comprehension and intentionally curated tier vocab and grade level text to support and deepen our comprehension. So our next steps for our school, we're going to continue having these conversations during our PLCs and we hope to deepen with company LA curriculum materials without losing the autonomy and creativity our teachers have. That is a real concern of theirs because they are really skilled at what they do. It's, it's a concern. And we're going to hopefully over these next few months be able to lessen some of that concern once they get into the pilots. We started this last spring, late last spring. Started the discussions, Mr. Schuster, Jill Lizier and the reading specialist over at Kensington. They're also piloting these same two programs. Spent a lot of time last spring looking at programs that are going to best fit our school while keeping OG as a really big component, K through three. That was kind of a must that our teachers had with, with any kind of pilot we looked at, we wanted to make sure OG was just not going to be forgotten. So looking at multiple programs, these two are the two that we felt would best fit our school. So Fish Tank is one and Arts and Letters is the other. These are going to be paired with our foundational reading instruction already happening in E K S, the OG, the OG trainings that we've gone through. Our dates are during that timeline, so 26, 27, 27, 28, 20, 29. We will be using a selected ELA curriculum, either Fish Tank or Arts and Letters alongside OG. 28, 29, SAU 16Y are going to start having conversations about a common K to five program or curriculum through all of our elementary schools. Jill's here to talk more about that if there's any questions, you know, about the district's vision. We didn't want to wait that long, you know, it's, it's too far away. We had needs in our building. We had needs in our building, comprehension, vocab, writing. And we didn't want to wait until 20, 29 before we really started that. In addition to the legislative update, 2027, we, we needed to do it. And what I told the staff is, we're really not doing this because of the legislative update. We're doing this because we had needs in our building. And they recognize that. They just happened to be the legislative updates that kind of pushed us along a little bit. Where could it maybe? But that's going to be happening 28, 29, SAU-wide.
28, 29 wouldn't be an implementation of anything. It would just be starting conversations across all schools about a common curriculum material. So.
Well, and you could use this school as your data.
That's what I was going to say, how many other schools in the district are already kind of this far ahead? They're taking these steps.
You guys are so great. I love it. This is great. So we have, we have schools that are using, one like comprehensive program. So Lincoln and Main Street have a, has a ELA program that covers every single thing, from like the foundational to everything. We've got a school that uses a smaller, a smaller program, kind of like Arts and Letters and Fish Tank. And then a couple of other schools are doing exactly what Brandon, just so eloquently explained, with very similar, with the similar programs.
Yeah. So the hope is when you get to that 20, 28, 29, that people are bringing their data and really able to like navigate through all of it.
Yes, and the principals and across all of our buildings have been really wonderful with the conversations. So that variable won't be, the variable of curriculum materials that we're going to look at, it's not going to be like nine different things we're going to look at. Because we have three schools right now that are looking at Fish Tank and Arts and Letters. But I want Kent, I want East Kingston to really choose the one that they think is the curriculum material that will work best for students. So there's no like underlying, I don't, I'm not rooting for one or the other. I really want to know what they think will work best for kids.
So I'm, I'm, I'll say, it makes me feel good that we've just spent so much money on OG and OG training and the last three years of preparing those kids to hear you say that that is the foundational work. And the, the ability to then move the kiddos in their level, in that like OG space to a Fish Tank or Arts and Letters, you know, is a, is a natural move rather than slapping a, a full program in front of them that they don't know. I mean, I think the transition there is so important, especially for kiddos in that yellow space who have worked really, really hard to get out of red, who are just barely making that green, to transition them to something new. Right? That's not going to make anybody grow.
Yeah.
So can you just explain why you chose Fish Tank and Arts and Letters and how it does kind of align to OG or what you have been doing?
Yeah, so there, there was, there was, I mean, the OG was, when I, when I brought this to our leadership team the first time, I said that this is kind of the direction we're going to be heading. There, there was just some, some, some blank stares because they immediately thought OG was going to kind of get kicked to the side, but we were going to go with a more comprehensive program. And within just a couple of minutes, you know, they were very relieved because I said that that's not necessarily going to happen. So we just started having those discussions. And when I left that meeting, it was, it was, okay, we, we need to be really strategic about what programs we look at because OG is, is working. And they were adamant that because it's working, they love it, our kids are growing, that that's going to be something that we can keep into our ELA curriculum here in addition to adding a program that had the writing, had, had the, the vocab. Of the other areas that, that they hit, because they're both science and reading based, is, is they both involve a big chunk of science and social studies, which there's, there's very little time in the schedule to really have a, a major focus on, on those two areas. So we wanted something that was also going to, you know, bring the science of social studies within, you know, within the other ELA blocks for their read-alouds, for their individual books that they're going to be reading, for the discussions that they're going to have during those, those, those ELA blocks can infuse the science of social studies within that. So Arts and Letters and Fish Tank both have a science and social studies component built within the reading program.
And are they, my guess is they are, but I'm going to ask anyway. Are they aligned to the New Hampshire standards, meaning that most of these programs are automatically like aligned to third grade social studies and they're put into the third grade reading levels? And my second question to that, now that I just said it, is, is it differentiated enough so kiddos in different reading levels could read the same content?
So it's going to be one book that all the kids in the class will be reading
Okay.
for the whole class discussion, but built within that block would be similar to what they do now is pull different groups to, and please jump in.
You're doing great.
Yeah.
That they're going to get what they need.
So they can shift flexiles, they can look, they can look at what the comprehension style is of the kid or, or whatever they need vocabulary-wise in those small groups?
Yes.
It's really big on building background knowledge. So I think that's what we've seen has been a little, has been missing is having conversa, so we're not going back to everybody reads the same book for the whole 45 minutes, but it is going back to a little bit of, we do read a book together and dissect it together, but then we also go into decoding on our, where we are at, at our level and reading at our level as needed. So it's like a mixture of both. So and also in choosing the programs, I sat with Kristin Schuster and an individual from another school. And we went through a curriculum review that had every aspect of what you would want in a pilot program for this, that's aligned to the science of reading. And we were able to say like, what we have for OG is met here. And so when we choose a program, what, what are we looking for? So we made sure we found things that fill in those missing pieces. And now is our chance to see, do, do we like these curriculum materials? Are they adaptable? Can students access them?
Yeah.
If it is a whole class book, how long are we in that whole class book? And are we losing students during that time? Because I share that concern. I don't want it to be that type of situation again, but I do want to build background knowledge and have rich conversations and build vocabulary. Because that was, that is one of the hardest pieces is the common vocabulary across grade levels. And how do we build vocabulary in students if we don't have time to identify that? We don't have enough PLC time to talk about, okay, what vocab are you teaching? What are you teaching? A curriculum material is supposed to bring you, is supposed to buy you time.
Well, it gives you, it gives you the ability to have a shared experience, right? Each, each kid, whether they're in that class, that class, or that class, those kids should be sharing similar experiences in content and knowledge, although they're, where they are in that space might look different.
Yeah, and so I'm not sure if you've heard of Witten Wisdom before. So that's a literacy program. Arts and Letters is by the same company, but it's supposed to be a little bit shorter of a program. So it doesn't take as much of the day. And so they'll be able to fit in more of, they'll still be able to fit in OG and those really strong practices that are going on in the classroom. So I'm excited to see how that pairs together.
The writing? Because that, the research coming out that the writing and the reading combining together is so important for their metacognition and how they're retaining information and their letter formation, how much writing is in each of these programs?
It's, it's, well, it's, it's built within that block.
Okay.
So I, I don't know if there's a specific time.
Time, right, but it's, it, because right, well, at least in third and fourth grade, right? That transition has moved to a Chromebook, right? And what does that look like? And the research now coming out is saying that the hand, well, we're moving to a handwriting piece anyway, but handwriting, them journaling, the metacognition actually is helping them with vocabulary and comprehension because they're physically, it's almost like sensory. They, they have to physically do it and it's cognitive work for some of these kids to do. So I'm just curious how much is in it. What happens with the IP kids? Are they going to get pulled during this time or are they going to be part of this time or?
They're going to be part of, they're going to be part of the pilot.
Okay.
The staff are, are very aware and I never worry about them pulling students during any, any whole group instruction that just, it doesn't happen here anyways.
Okay.
But it definitely won't happen here. I'm not sure if I include it in the timeline. So we're, we're starting with Arts and Letters. We've had one training so far. We have another one during, during the October in Service Day. And then the, of the Arts and Letters, all of our teachers, K-5, will be piloting one Arts and Letters module or unit starting in December. And that's, I think, six to eight weeks or so. And then during that time, we'll also have a training with Fish Tank in, in January for that pilot to start in February. And then the end of May is when that pilot will end, that module will end. And then May to June, we'll start having those discussions building wide about where we're going to go for next year.
And has there been any discussion around flip-flopping with the kids? So you're doing Arts and Letters with the kids and then you're going to end up doing Fish Tank with the kids. I don't know. Is that going to be confusing for them? Are they going, is it going to be a, one, we're going to do one unit, right? I heard you say that. And then we're going to move to this other curriculum piece. I mean, that's a lot of transitions for kids. You know, just is there discussion around how that's going to happen? And they're still doing, working in OG.
Yeah.
I thought about that a lot as well. When you're working on exploring curriculum materials, there's lots of different ways to do it. You can do, you can have like a couple of teachers use something all year long and, and you can alternate teachers doing that. When we were discussing for a school like this, such a small school, and there's such collaborative conversations, we really wanted everybody to experience the curriculum materials. And so that would mean that they would each need to take a unit and do it. So because of that, we had to do some pre-planning over the summer with aligning it to standards and competencies so that teachers could look at their year, scope, and sequence. So it didn't feel like a, wait, didn't we already do opinion in October? And now we're doing opinion again? So Kristin Schuster spent some time at the end of the year at our summer institute taking a look at the pilot modules, aligning them to the standards and competencies for teachers so then they can update their scope and sequence so it can be as seamless as possible for students and fit into their natural groove. Yes, the materials will look new to students, but hopefully it won't be an overlap of something they've already learned and kind of not fit in to their.
Yeah. And are the, are the one-two, the one-two PLC doing the same unit so that they can collect that data with kids and the three-fourths are doing the same unit?
Yes.
Okay. And then a five, the five is doing their own unit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a really big year for us. In addition to that, you know, we, we want to have, we want to have something in place for next school year. So once, once you, you know, you beat the budget for the first time, there will be a significant increase, right, in curriculum materials because we're going to have to purchase books, lots and lots of books. So that'll have, that'll have a budget impact.
And is there any way you can strategically do a gradual release with that? Like, could you do a, do the three-five first because the, the K-2 is doing OG? And then the second year, do the, do you know what I mean? Like, could you do it, split it in half?
Cascading, yeah.
Yeah, casc, good word, cascading, yes. That way, that way it, A, it, it doesn't feel as huge and it's the three-five that we're really, you know, the, really working on the, the whole package of vocabulary, writing, reading, comprehension, just something to think about. Like where, where can we not have it so enormous? But I don't know, just something to throw out there.
Do you definitely think about that? And also, there is a price difference between the two, like a significant one, right?
I haven't gotten it from Fish Tank yet. I just sent her our, our, our potential numbers for next year.
Okay.
The Fish Tank, Fish Tank is, is the writing program or curriculum. And then we purchase books from a, from a separate vendor.
Okay.
Arts and Letters is all built within, so that's why this one's taking a little bit longer.
And when do you plan on having all those numbers in?
I'll, I'll have it in the budget for the first time we look at it in November, yeah.
Budget-wise, was, was the, the costs upfront that you just talked about, Brandon, was that anticipated going into our budget conversations and all that last year?
No, it was, it was something that we really looked at in
After.
The spring, yeah, yep. Any other questions? All right. That's it for me.
I am, I am just going to say for, for the record that it is now 5:54 and public input has been open, so I'm going to close it at this point. Okay, so Chair's report, I already did the superintendent evaluation. Policy Committee, we meet next week, correct? That is the first like official meeting of the year. So we will meet next week. We do need to review all of these. You spoke to the parental bill of rights. I don't know that we need to do anything, and, or do you need to speak more to that?
Just that that one needs to be approved tonight by the board so that we can post it on, in the district's policy manual and also get into handbooks. So if you have any questions about that, I can, I can help with that.
Do you want me?
It's the first one in here?
It's the first one. There's, they, the parental bill of rights is really a collection of rights that, there's, there's not, not a lot that's new. It's just all collected now into one policy. And so an important part of the law is that it, it has to be published and shared. So that's why it's coming this evening.
And the policy committee that is functioning over the summer has already looked at this?
The policy committee has not looked at it, no. This one, this one needs to be done as soon as possible. The, and JICJ, just while we're talking about those two, that's the unauthorized communication devices. Again, the law's already in effect, but we wanted to make sure to have time for parental input if, if there was any. So again, that will go to policy next week just for discussion and then back to boards in October for approval. But the parental bill of rights should be approved tonight. And then the reviews, like I said, are just for review unless you want further discussion on any of them.
Does anyone have any questions?
No, just kind of going through some items in the parental bill of rights right now, so. And this is, we're basically approving it to get published, you said?
Yes.
Okay, but at any point during the year, it could be amended if somebody put forth?
Sure.
And has this gone through any change? Because it hasn't gone to policy, it hasn't gone through any changes yet since compared to last year or no?
This is new and this is straight from the, the requirements.
Got it.
Okay.
We need a motion to approve?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve the parental bill of rights?
A second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome. And so for?
The communication, anybody need to do something to?
That one will be next.
Next one?
Yep. But if you had any questions, I could answer those for you. Or if you wanted to have discussion.
Brandon, have you seen anything in the last two, two weeks? Like watches, what about, what about earbuds or?
No, it's never been a problem here. Who did still?
Sure. Oh, yeah. The watch, yeah. So one of the things that I was curious about was like listening centers or headphones. As long as they're school issued, then they should be fine. I have another issue with that. But are those being cleaned when kids are, you know, using them and sharing them? And if it's in their IEP, could they bring, are they allowed to bring it from home?
So there are exceptions can be made. It has to be approved by the superintendent.
Okay.
It would really have to be a device that the school could not provide for them. So that we certainly have some exceptions for medical reasons that have already come through and been approved, but certainly if there's something in an IEP or 504 that would require it, it would just go to the superintendent for approval.
Yeah, so my, my understanding is that all, anything that the school issues is allowed, right? And on Chromebooks, they're allowed to plug in or if they're listening to a story or if they're doing a tutorial or whatever. But are they being issued their own or are they sharing headphones or head?
They have, they each have assigned.
They each have assigned headphones? Okay. Great.
Good question.
Okay. Any other, are you not, are you taking devices if you need to? Are you like?
Still has watches.
I'll just, yeah, I'll just use a watch, for example. If, if a kiddo has an, an Apple Watch, you're not removing, you're not, are they removing it?
So I've never had to do this, but in, in our handbook, there's language in our handbook about this that, you know, there will be a reminder.
Sure.
A call home if needed. If it becomes a problem, then it would be confiscated and parents would have to go pick it up.
I just, I just want to make sure we have, we have clarity on what that looks like just in case some parents need to know that. Great. Okay. Would you like me to read all of the reviews or are we just good with them?
I think you can just be good with them.
Okay.
I can just be good with these.
Yes. Unless you like to read them.
No.
There's, there's several.
There's several, yeah.
They're right there.
Yeah, okay, so I make a motion to approve the reviews of each of the policies under review?
Second? All in favor?
All in favor? Aye?
Safety and security? I don't have any dates or updates yet on when we're meeting next. I don't know if you do.
We do.
Oh, we do? Did I miss an email? Is that not included?
Sorry. We have one September right now, so. Yeah, 25th, 9:00 AM.
Sharon sent me something back in July, so apologies for missing that. I have it right here. So September 25th at 9:00 AM.
Yep.
Thursday. So more to come following that kickoff meeting for this year. Do you want to cover, she's planning one?
Yeah, go, yep.
Um, so I wasn't able to make the last strategic planning committee meeting. It was the same night as our goals review session here. Chris had sent over an agenda and some materials prior to that. That was just sort of reviewing everything that we had discussed and went over and sort of landed on last school year. More specifically, the KPIs that the team kind of came up with based on the findings from the audit and the survey that we put up back in March. I haven't had a chance to connect with Chris on how that meeting went. I know that during that meeting, they were discussing the KPIs and he was gathering feedback. I also am not sure if you had a chance to catch up with him following that as well. Otherwise, I will see if I can connect with Chris at some point and have Mort report back for our next meeting. I don't know when we're scheduled to meet again next. I don't see anything on the calendar for that yet, but I'm going to get more to come.
Okay, SAU Wellness Committee, I am no longer on that committee. So unless Brandon has an update from our wellness, yeah, wellness reps from the school, I won't be participating on that committee because I'm on many others.
Because you are.
Yes. Okay, so goals, goal updates. Goal number one, we did review each of the goals at our workshop. I just want to make sure that we're all clear with those three. We did do some minor changes in wording, so just make sure it's what we said. Brandon, I don't know when our first meeting is for the academic growth and learning.
It'll be November.
Okay, so in November, I'll have more. And, but we'll also have an update next, next board meeting on special ed and the summer stuff, whatever you put in there, yeah, great. Okay. Community engagement, JT?
I have some feelers out for wood chips. Every shop, I talked to somebody, a cornerstone tree, they have the material. I think the next step would probably be, it makes sense if we find some time to go out there to figure out what the quantity is that we're going to be looking at. Do volunteer my truck to, if you guys need two trucks.
So we've, we've had a couple, a couple of different parents reach out with connections. I did talk to a company today that said they would be donating 60 yards. We did measure, it's a really awkward area.
The area.
So it was like 150 feet by 65 in one area and like 110. So we just kind of are estimating on the, the amount of yards. We're looking at maybe three to four inches deep of wood chips. So, yeah, we're just giving it out to those companies to kind of give us a really good guess on how many yards. But I know one company just told me today and they're going to go over 60 yards. So we're going, we're going to see how, how, how that does and then just keep, keep making.
Um, I, I had, maybe it was last week, I had a conversation with Mr. Mizzie about getting the wood chips back there.
Yep.
He was a little concerned about the fields and thinking about how, what that would look like using smaller, like a trailer wouldn't work because he's afraid it's going to be, I don't know, just maybe, I don't know how that all works, but thinking about how you're getting it back there and the route that you're taking and what's best, you know, talk to Wayne.
We have it, we have it outside.
Outside, yeah, thank you. Sorry. Yep. Okay, awesome. Moving forward. And lastly, the five-year capital improvement plan.
Yep, so the biggest thing now is just sort of looking back at that list that we came up with based on the audit a few years back and crossing out the things that we've completed and sort of looking at what we have left on that list and prioritizing those items, adding in anything additional from this school year. So I know it's, I think something Brandon was working on. I think you were updating the Excel, Brandon, did you share that out yet?
Nope, because the Excel no longer exists. It was a Dr. Ryan owned spreadsheet. And when he left, it went with him. IT worked, spent significant amount of time trying to find it. And we didn't have a hard copy. It was just all done electronically. So we're going to have to recreate that. I, I pretty much, I can look back at our, at our invoices to know what we've, I mean, we've already checked it all off. There are some things that we'll have to add on there, but yeah, we've, we've done a lot, so.
And then in terms of signage, and obviously that still hasn't happened. Do, do you know when that is happening?
Sign's done.
Oh, sign's done? Okay, I mean, I haven't looked at it yet, so it's.
Sign's done.
Yeah. Great.
Anything else? Okay. So with that, our next meeting is October 14th at 5:30.
5:30.
So I will close the meeting at 6:07 PM. Yep.